Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, January -- excuse me, Monday, June 9th, 2025. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 1-408-650-3123 and access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this board are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. So our first item tonight is 6:00. We're going to call our meeting to order, and then we're going to go into executive session. This is what I say, right?
Yep.
The whole thing. Okay, so a motion would be in order to go into executive session in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, "To deliberate upon matters which have done in an open meeting could detrimentally affect the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to collective bargaining, municipal unions, and litigation." To come out of the executive session and reconvene in an open meeting, following a second to the motion, a roll-call vote is required.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, roll-call vote. Dan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We're going to executive session. Good evening. We're reconvening in open session. This is the Select Board on June 9th, 2025. Will we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, if you are able to stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so public comments. We have one person signed up for the public comment session prior to -- at the beginning of our meeting, Eric Richard.
My name is Eric Richards. Live on Ravine Drive in the lovely town of Auburn. Just would like to ask, if possible, to defer my comment until the agenda item for the engineering review is up, since I brought it to your attention, and there hasn't been basically any discussion on the issue at all until this point.
Can we do that? You can have him do comment at the end. Well, you can -- so you can comment now, or you can do comments at the end of the meeting?
I reserve --
But not in between?
Happy to reserve to the end.
Okay, to the end. You're signed up, I believe, so you're all set.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, so let's see. Going back to our agenda, number six, community organizations, nothing here. Seven, presentations, public hearings, none. Before we start section eight --
Madam Chair, can I just make a correction? I see the Friends of the Auburn Public Library. They would be a community group. I know they're not slated under that.
Mm-hmm.
But can we -- would you accept a motion to move that item up?
Yeah, in a moment. I'd like to hear a motion first to move item 10D up to current time. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so Superintendent Chamberlain is here. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I am here again to request funding from the Special Education Stabilization Account to finish this year of tuition for a student that came to us quite late last summer. At this point, there's a remaining balance of $49,475.73 that will round out the payment for this school year, leaving a balance in the stabilization account of $425,153.24 as of May 19th.
Good. And the school committee has already approved this transfer. They have. Okay. Do we have any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we grant the request as outlined in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So --
I'd like to make a motion that we move up item 10C, Friends of the Auburn Public Library.
Where now?
Yes. They should have been slated under community organization, so they should have come before everybody outside of public comment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, so Auburn Public Library, thank you.
My name is Linda Daddis. I'm the president of the Friends of the Auburn Library. I'm here to request for permit for an outdoor book sale on July 19th from 10:00 to 12:30. It will take place just outside the garage.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Are there plans that if, due to the climate weather, that you're going to be able to move into the --
Yes, that's why we picked that date, because there's nothing else going on in the library.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
That was my comment, if there was a rain date or what their plans were.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we issue the request as outlined in the agenda.
A second.
Okay, any comments, questions, further questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. We're all set, thank you.
Motion that the permit fee be waived. This is a nonprofit organization.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive the fee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Madam Chair, may I make a motion to move up item 10A?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, move up item 10A. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so this is to recognize and issue a proclamation for the members of the Auburn Fire Headquarters Building Committee. Should we have them come stand?
Yes.
Yes, could we have the members that are here from the building committee come up to the podium, please? And when you come to the podium, if you could just individually introduce yourself to the board.
Good evening, Glenn Johnson.
Tim Oderdonk.
Joe Schnett.
Alex Rozek.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have a proclamation for each of you and the other members of the committee who aren't able to be here tonight. We wish to recognize the individuals for their valuable contributions to the Town of Auburn and its citizens, and whereas there is an urgent need to replace the aging West Street Fire Station and build a new, modern fire headquarters to serve the community and first responders, and whereas the member was appointed to the Fire Headquarters Building Committee in 2024, joining 12 other dedicated residents in committing their time, skills, and energy to this vital effort, whereas the member worked diligently on collecting RFPs, design, public outreach, conceptual planning, and campaigning efforts leading up to the town meeting, and whereas, thanks in part to their tireless advocacy and teamwork, Auburn voters overwhelmingly approved the new fire headquarters, which will act as the foundation for a stronger, safer, and more resilient future for Auburn's residents and emergency responders. So now, therefore, we, the Auburn Board of Selectmen, on behalf of all town employees and citizens of Auburn, do hereby express our sincere appreciation to the members for their loyal and distinguished service. As a member of the Fire Headquarters Building Committee, and we thank you for your professionalism and respect that was displayed while serving our town residents. Thank you very much. Okay. Does anyone have anything else? Anyone else want to add something?
I appreciate all the work, and I've heard you guys put into it. The whole team, I watched those meetings. I knew that the best interests of the community were at stake, and everyone was very diligent in providing and putting forth a plan that, again, overwhelmingly was passed by the voters. So really appreciate your hard work and dedication. Thank you.
All right, so will the gentleman come back up, please? Thank you. Any other questions? All right. One second. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Proclamation. I know you. Mr. Johnson, congratulations. There you go. And Joseph? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. There you go. And Joseph? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Proclamation. I know you. Mr. Johnson, congratulations. There you go. And Joseph? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Madam Chair, can someone from staff take a picture of you and the vice chair with the members of the committee, please?
Yeah.
That is customary.
All right. All right.
I make the recommendation that the entire board join us. It's all of our proclamations.
Nope, it's just the two of you and the town manager.
Why is that?
No, it's usually the chair and vice chair, and I'm going to shut off my mic, guys. No, no, it's just you guys. It's the chair, vice chair, you guys. Get used to it, madam manager. You're in the photo.
If you did the whole board, we could have the background there.
Do we want to stand up here? Want to stand up in the front?
You didn't follow my suggestions, so you're in.
I'm like perfect right here.
That's true. Todd will block us. You're absolutely right. Perfect.
This works out lovely for me.
Got to have some fun.
Should I try to be in the picture? Just my face?
Do you like a photo?
Between their arms?
Just a photo bomb.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. I should call you back up.
I know it's coming. I'm not worried. I can go remote.
All right, going back to our agenda, we have item -- departmental items 10A. Our town planner is going to have a discussion and potential board vote on a DLTA fund grants. Hello, Adam.
Good evening. So Adam and I are the town planner. I've recently applied for DLTA funds through CMRPC. DLTA is District Local Technical Assistance. CMRPC usually receives these funds annually from the state, which they can then distribute to their various towns for certain projects. So this particular project is paired with Berlin. Berlin has a mall, just like we do, so it's -- the project's titled Berlin, an Auburn Mall reuse project. And I'm just going to read out the excerpt. It kind of explains what the project's going to be. The goal for the Auburn portion of the project is to look at the entire mall area, zoning district, traffic flow, parking, current use. The objective is to discover potential uses for what is the mall and parcels in the vicinity. The purpose is to create a plan that the town could use to market this area for potential developers and investors. So the thought behind this is just try to help the mall remain vibrant, to have some things going on internally. We know there's a vacant anchor with Sears, so it's a small project, only $20,000 for both towns, but it's a step to try to keep economic development in the area going.
Is there any matching that the town has to do?
No. Just my time.
All right. Questions?
When you say the mall, is it just that one parcel, or is it all the way down Route 12, down to, what is it?
The regional mall district covers the mall parcel. There's also a couple more parcels, Papaginos, on that side of Route 12 to the overpass. So there's like three or four smaller parcels that are technically part of the mall district.
And have you been approached by the owners of that land? Have they encouraged development of this? I've just --
No, this is just the way -- we know what the area looks like. It's -- no one approached me. We're aware that the malls in the region, in the entire country, have one of the difficulties. A lot of them have closed or converted, so we just want to make sure, Auburn, that doesn't happen to Auburn without us trying to make sure it doesn't remain viable, in whatever manner that may look like.
So is the goal to look at the current zoning and change that prior to having projects, or to just be aware of what needs to change?
Possible zoning changes. We have made some changes in the last couple of years, a couple years ago. Just to look at the market for this type of use, retail, has changed a lot, so we want to make sure, or try to stay at the forefront of changes.
And have any of those changes resulted in more development or different uses?
One change was reliant, that that's a new change, that helped that remain viable. Other changes, no. No one's approached us to turn them into condos or create apartments or anything like that, but we have reduced some uses, and I don't know what they are offhand, but some used to require special permit, now they just need site plan. So we've tried to keep that district nimble as possible, without having too many burdens with the regulations.
Thank you.
So, building off Mr. Chambers' comments, have you had any conversations with any of the owners in that area, not necessarily just with the mall, because you obviously have right across the street? Have you had any sort of conversations? Has economic development had any sort of comments, or just by simply being in the environment of the chamber and the business community? You know, what have we done to reach out to the property owners, I guess? Have we?
Myself, I haven't done anything yet. I know we work with the mall for some of the products they're looking to do or have being done, but none of the other project owners.
So do you intend to have conversations with the business owners?
I'll reach out to them.
And I did notice that Berlin has some outreach listed, but Auburn didn't, so naturally, we've been talking about communication and with the community and bringing them into the process early. And when I say community, that also means business owners, because they're part of the community, so I don't want any -- but I think the residents would be a good party to have that conversation with, and obviously, the business community would be someone that I'd be looking for. So do you have a strategy for any sort of community outreach?
I haven't met with CMRPC yet. This is just early days, so I'll talk to them in the coming weeks about tactics.
I was just concerned that it wasn't in the application, so that is, you know, one of the concerns that I had, that, again, I know the board has had multiple conversations about communication, and I really think that this is, A, it's our biggest -- obviously, the mall is our biggest taxpayer, and we want it to remain successful, and we certainly want it to grow with the times, but communication, to me, as well as to members of the community, is so important. My last question is, do you have any sort of time estimate? Is it just, I shouldn't say just, your time? Is it planning staff time, which is not obviously just yourself? What do you think time commitment? I mean, you've got a pretty heavy load right now.
Probably fairly minimal. Like I said, this is a smaller type of project. I'll be working with the Economic Development Coordinator. I've looked her into these early stages, so we'll make sure, Brooks, that she's involved. I don't expect any other staff at this point, so I don't have an estimate for hours, a couple hours a week, maybe.
Okay. Thank you, Adam, and thank you for being proactive. I don't mean to, and I hope you don't take criticism for what I was saying, I appreciate you being proactive and applying for this. I think that's great, and I'm sure it will be helpful.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
One, I just want to thank you for being proactive and applying for this. It looks like a good opportunity. I think that, you know, in the past, we've been really good at putting plans together, such as the Jory Square Plan, and not necessarily following through and doing the next steps. I think this is an important next step, to identify this parcel and use the expertise of the CMRPC to, you know, to provide options, not just for the mall, but if the mall was not to stay, what could happen. The -- I share Mr. Carpenter's concerns with the amount of outreach. Berlin, you know, had information in here that they were going to do outreach for the community, but also through their planning board, and I was wondering if there's an opportunity to include not just the Economic Development Coordinator, Brooke, but also bring in the Auburn Chamber of Commerce through some engagement, but also, as Mr. Chambers said, the business owners that own the parcels. But I think one of the biggest untapped resources we have is the Economic Development Advisory Committee. I think this is something that I know those members have an interest in. Those members want to do more with respect to supporting economic development, identifying opportunities, and advocating for them. So I'd like to know if there's a possibility, as this goes forward, that you loop them in and make this a part of their agenda, to be involved, to discuss, to provide feedback and options, sort of the sort of official town board that would be involved in this process?
Yeah, I think we could put them in some manner. Thank you.
Okay, do we hear a motion?
Make a motion that we authorize the filing of the grant. This is CMRPC, the line.
So that count.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. All right, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. All right, next on our list, we're going to talk Engineering Department. We're going to have a status update on the dam at Camp Gleason, join a Paquin DPW Director and Town Engineer, Emma Williamson. Come on up. We have some materials for this, yep. Okay.
We wanted to provide an update about a concern raised by a resident regarding Eddie Pond Dam. This resident reached out to us, as well as the Department of Conservation's Office of Dam Safety, about water seeping through the sidewalls of the dam. In response to this concern, we went out and conducted a field visit at the site and did see the seepage. However, it was not rapidly increasing, cloudy, containing soil deposits, or had any other indication of failure or progress toward failure. In addition to this, we also coordinated with the Office of Dam Safety to schedule a joint inspection with that office, their consultant, Fosin O'Neill, and ourselves. At this inspection, they found similar things, that seepage was occurring, but that it wasn't indicative of failure. They also noted that the seepage was due to flow between the mortar, between the stone blocks, and from water flowing over the dam, and not through the embankment, which is more concerning. They recommended that we continue to monitor the seepage, and that at the next regularly-scheduled inspection, that any changes be noted. So this next inspection is scheduled for either this month or next month. It's a routine inspection, so they'll make sure to pay special attention to that.
Okay. And how often is the dam inspected?
It's inspected every two years.
Through the chair, you just said you were instructed to continue to monitor that. Is there a schedule for the monitoring rather than the inspection? Will you be going out more often until the inspection takes place? What is that?
Yeah, they -- go ahead. So, so part of the inspection, the town will get a report on recommendations on any upgrade, anything, any upgrades or remediations that we might need to make, and we can definitely, you know, anticipate that they're probably going to recommend that at some point we replace that mortar, or at least stop that seepage. So we're going to wait until we get that report, until that inspection is done, we get the report, and look to see if there's any other recommendations, and work with our consultant to mitigate the seepage and whatever else is in the report.
So based on the report, and based on the engineers going out, as yourself went out, there's no immediate concern? Nothing needs to be addressed short term? And then the next inspection will take place, and everyone's good with that? So no concerns there? Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Yes, sir.
So, building on Mr. Chambers' question, do we, as a community, go out and do inspections in between the two-year period to make sure that there are no issues, any greater seepage?
So it depends on staff availability, as well as part of the requirements for the dams is to clear vegetation, so there is staff going out there, looking at the -- looking at the dam, but we're not the trained professionals that we have, you know, that the consultants are. These consultants look at these things every single day, so they have more expertise.
Yes, well, I would think so. I just am concerned that we're waiting two years in between inspections. And I get the state says every two years, and I'm sure it's not inexpensive to have people come out, but then again, it's not going to be cheap if something happens. So I'm a big fan of preventing something rather than having it, and it sounds like there's more seepage, but it's not a concern, but we don't really know when conditions can change, correct? There could be a considerable storm that could do something, that could create more of a hazard, not a grave hazard, but still exacerbate the problem. Is that a fair statement?
So, I mean, anything that could happen, the seepage isn't due to the instability of the dam, it's due to the mortar, so it's just water kind of taking the easiest route. So that's why the state basically said, you know, moderate, where they don't see anything that would, you know, cause them concern.
Thank you.
If I may come back?
Yeah.
All right. I think in your report, you mentioned that there's some work that the state needs to do with clearing of the area. Is that correct?
So we need to make sure that there's no vegetation in the vicinity of the dam, and there is some vegetation that has fallen in, so I'm not sure if we've already gone out there, but we're going to be going out there this week to just clear that, just to, you know, as just a regular maintenance, but.
So is there anything that the state is responsible for doing to ensure that this doesn't get worse?
No, the state is basically just a regulatory agency and advising us what we need to do to maintain that dam.
Okay.
They were certainly very helpful and very, you know, very knowledgeable, so we were grateful for their expertise, but.
Okay, maybe I'm just misremembering what I read here, but I thought there was something that the state was needing to do, and you were going to reach out to them. That's where my question was going, but if --
You're talking about the culvert?
That might be what it is, so sorry if it's not related to the dam part, but.
No, it's all related. It's related to what we're looking at, I would say, so.
So is there state responsibility to clear the culvert?
So there is a culvert underneath Route 20, upstream of the dam. I'm not sure if it's, if there's any, you know, it's submerged, so we really don't know if there's any blockage. It doesn't appear to be, but we are going to be looking at the inspections and when the last state inspection has occurred.
If I may, through the chair, we've had quite a bit of conversations regarding the culvert and the dam the last couple of weeks, and one of the things that we do on a regular basis is we watch the water levels. If the water levels are not consistent to show that the water's flowing from one side to the other, we can tell when the culvert's getting full of debris. So that is just something that we actually -- So that is just something that we actually eye almost on a daily basis. It is, I've done outreach to the state because we did have a recommendation from a resident to see if, while they're doing some work over on Route 20, if they could look at that culvert. So I've done outreach to the state as well. So we anticipate that we'll have continued discussions regarding the culvert.
Through the chair, is, is that our responsibility to maintain it or just to notify should something go wrong?
Through the chair, it is not our responsibility, but it's, it's just good working relationship with the state and we, because it's our land, and of course, if there is a flow problem, it's going to affect our property and amongst other things, we keep an eye on it.
And I do recall the nasty rainstorm and the backing up of Route 20 further down. So I'm assuming there's more than that that we should be aware of and reaching out to the state if that's something that needs to happen, so thank you.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, I just have a couple of questions. Just so I understand, we regularly, we're required to inspect the dams every two years. We had an inspection in 2023, correct?
So yes, we're required to inspect Eddie Pond Dam.
Yep.
Every two years, just because it's a, it's considered.
Because it's a, and we, we did it in 2023, and we have already plans for 2025 using Fossil Nail. Okay, so we are in compliance. There was never a point when we were not in compliance. In terms of the treatment of the herbicide applications, I know we got, we had to postpone that or stop it, but we received a letter in March 4th, 2024, allowing us to go forward. According to the memo, we haven't done that yet. We're going to either resume this summer or next season. Can we make a priority to get to it this, this season?
Yes, so that letter was from the National, is it Natural Heritage?
Yep.
Basically saying they're approving our plan for treatment, but we also need to permit it through the Conservation Commission. So that's been submitted, I believe it's on the next hearing date. So once that NOI is approved, then treatment can move forward. So we're actively working on getting that permitting done.
Okay, so we're actively working on that, and that will, the plan is to do that this summer or this fall. So again, we're, we're taking proactive steps to do those treatments. And I just want to recap again, the state, you, you did initial inspection based on the white paper that was presented, you saw seepage, you called the state out, you inspected it with the state. The agreement was that although it is seeping, it is not an immediate failure, it's just a monitor, do your normal, you know, do your normal inspections, and there was no immediate, you must take action right now from the state.
Correct. So it's, it was kind of coincidental that the consultant that the state brought in for our joint inspection actually also works for Fosse and O'Neil. So there's also continuity there, where they, you know, they had recorded, you know, how much seepage there was, and that'll be incorporated into the report.
The, the one request I do have for administration is that apparently, you know, in 2023, the report did make several recommendations that were not acted upon. We're waiting now for 2025, obviously it makes sense to wait until we see the new updated ones. But if we can prioritize implementing those action steps that they recommend, just that we can make sure that, again, one, we stay in compliance, but two, it stays in the good condition or, or the relative fair condition that it is right now, that's just one thing I would ask for the administration. But thank you for putting this together. I'm glad to see that we have been in compliance, that we were not out of compliance, and that we're taking proactive steps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, I believe you're staying for the next item, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So next item, we have a discussion and board vote to accept the MOA to convert the stop sign at Lester Street Bryn Mawr Avenue intersection to an all-way stop control. And Joanna is going to talk about this, right?
Thank you. Yes, so the town was approached several months ago by the state. They started a program to look at some high-crash intersections throughout the state, intersections that were one-stop control or a two-way stop sign.
Yep.
And they had offered, a municipality that was interested, free, basically a free engineering study to see if an intersection that the state had picked out, that they had, that they noticed the, the high collision rate, if that intersection would be a good candidate to, to convert to an all-way, all-way stop intersection. So that study has been done, and the consultant, GPI, has concluded that it is, based on the number of crashes, it is a good candidate to convert that intersection to a four-way stop. And the intersection is Bryn Mawr Ave and Lester Street. So as part of that program, the state not only is paying for the study, but if we enter in, into this MOA, they'll also provide the, the materials to put up the LED stop signs, the posts, and, and some other signage that would be necessary for this. So I'm just looking to see if the board would approve this, this MOA and, and implement the, the stop signs.
Thank you. Questions?
If I may. One, I'm very happy to see the, the report from GPI. This was one of the five intersections that the board may remember I had red flagged as one of the, the five highest with crashes that I had hoped our staff would look at. And I'm glad to see that, that it, it triggered Mass DOT's response as part of this program. My, I'm fully supportive of this, read the report, agree with its content. I do have some questions or concerns about the process. One, none of the butters were, this was added to our agenda today, none of the butters were notified about this, they haven't been given the opportunity to come in, share their opinion with us on whether they think it's a good idea or not. It certainly meets all of the engineering criteria, based on both the federal MUTCD as well as the state, Mass amended MUTCD. It's something that, you know, that I think will work, however, I'd like to hear the residents' viewpoint on this, whether they think it's a good idea or not. I also have, you know, so, so I guess, is there a reason why, and I'm, I know about the program due to my day job, is there a reason why we can't wait till our next meeting so that we can sufficiently notice the residents, allow them to come in, provide their comment before this board votes yea or nay? I also think that along with accepting the MOU, the board actually has to take a formal vote, which is not on our agenda, to, to declare this intersection as a four-way stop per Mass General Law, Chapter 85, Section 2, is a vote we have to take as well, which is not on the agenda. So I'm, I'm wondering if there's not a reason why we can't hold this until our next meeting?
I wanted to present this to the board, just because there is a little bit of a sense of urgency by Mass DOT, they're looking to gather, to get the MOAs from all the individual towns so that they can order the materials. But I, I do share the same concern that the, the residents were not, were not notified. I wanted to see if, if the board would be looking to support this, and I can convey that to the, to the state, saying that, you know, maybe the board is looking to support this, but we would need some, you know, an additional two weeks to, to reach out to the residents.
Okay. So we can put it on the agenda for two weeks from today? We'll send some letters out?
Yes.
Thank you.
Through the chair, so knowing that this is a hazardous intersection, are there obstructions or other things that are going to be addressed? Or is just simply stopping the car is going to solve all the problems?
So there, there are some, some additional, you know, so they're, they're going to be paying, providing us with the LED stop signs. There's also some signage that's going to be provided ahead of the stop sign, you know, change in intersection, I'm not really sure, I don't remember the wording, but on Lester Street, stop sign ahead on Bryn Mawr, there is some pavement markings, as well as some tree trimming that we're also going to be continued to doing, to do.
I do have a question. So I live in this neighborhood, so I'm, I'm super familiar with it. Are they going to put this stop ahead on the Lester Street before you come up that small hill that puts you right down into the stop sign?
So I have the.
I think that's.
There needs to be.
Part of that problem, that is, you are, you come up that hill, start heading down and stop, and if you don't know that stop sign's there, I mean, I've, I've seen people blow through it, so, you know.
So the, so going towards the.
Going towards Lester Street, coming towards Bryn Mawr, going towards like Lester Street Extension, is that the right street?
So Lester Street goes.
Coming towards the Police Department.
Okay, so going down the hill, right.
So before you cross Bryn Mawr Ave is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Coming down, it could be lower, upper.
So it's, so it's approximately the southeast direction on Lester Street approaching Bryn Mawr, heading towards the police station. It looks like they're positioning the sign 230 feet back from the intersection, so I believe that's over the hill.
Make it over the hill?
Yeah, that makes it over the hill. So before you go up and down the hill, that's where the, the stop ahead sign is, is.
Okay. That's, that's great, I fully support. I'm happy to hear what the residents have to say, but I can tell you, I've seen several accidents there myself, so I can't imagine how many they have seen.
If I can, through the chair, when I received this today, I did outreach to the police chief who could not make it, to see what his thoughts and our opinions were on this. And he was very supportive of DOT's recommendation. He did say he was working with DPW to trim trees in that area, and that's been a, a problem for years. So he's recommending maybe flashing lights, something beforehand, but if you read the packet, it, it literally tells us step by step how to make this successful. So I'm, I'm looking forward to implementation when it's time.
Through the chair, so you said that they selected this intersection, so was there a process where you provided a bunch of intersections, maybe the top five, or they just reached out to us? I'm just trying to understand the process. And now, again, there's other intersections that are dangerous too, and that's the next question is like, how do we get more of this to solve the accidents or reduce the accidents on those other streets?
It seems to me that this is more of a, more of a pilot project, because they, the state actually selected intersections throughout municipalities throughout the state. So it was a, an intersection that they had, they had selected, but it didn't, it sounded like they were interested in hearing about other intersections that municipalities might be aware of, or residents that, that are local to, to, you know, to the area, might be aware of, and whether it's this round or in the future, looking at, you know, continuing the, the program.
We did do a forum with the residents for traffic concerns, so we should be ahead of the game and be able to provide that to the state, right? So we're, we're ahead of the game there. Hopefully, but there's more of these to come down and we can solve a lot more problems.
Yeah, what, Madam Chair, if I may, what, what this was is they did, this is a pilot program, this is the first year that they're doing this. They looked at intersections across the state that were two-way stop controlled, not all-way stop controlled, that had high crashes at them, and they set a certain threshold. Then they approached the communities with that list and, and said, you know, is this something you'd be interested in converting to an all-way stop? We'll give you your study, we'll give you, and if the study supports it and the municipality wants to, we'll give you the materials to do it. But they had selected this, and as the director said, they did, as part of this round, they were not adding any, but they were interested for future rounds of, for those municipalities that wanted to participate, because some chose not to, they were interested in hearing about other potential intersections to look at for future rounds.
Thank you.
All right, so it sounds like the plan, we'll see you in two weeks, all right? And we'll have some, hopefully some butters here who might make some comments also, and then we'll be able to vote at that time.
Right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So back to our agenda, do I hear a motion to move up item 10F?
So moved.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to move item 10F up. Do I hear, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so Mr. Sotier.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
Good evening.
President of the Board.
Good evening.
My name is Sotier Papa Livo, and we, Bill Hannigan, Bill Hannigan from Hannigan Engineering, and Peter Freeman, who drafted the memorandum of, of agreement. We, I, I think the proposal that we was presented to you several weeks ago, it has been modified based on meetings that we had with members of the Board of Selectmen that were designated by this board to meet and discuss making the plan better. There were a series of comments that were made, that they were incorporated into the memorandum of agreement, and the last piece was including the replacement of a six-inch water line with an eight-inch water line from the property site all the way down to Rochdale, approximately 2,400 linear feet. That was one of the major items, and we looked at it, and we had to make modifications to the site plan in order to pay for the cost of that extension. We had to make changes to include additional units so that, so that it can be paid for it. And right, right now, we have three buildings, each building is 32 units, there is going to be an elevator, but the, the buildings are set way back on the property, and there'll be a lot of screening in, in order for those who live along Wallace Ave, they don't get to see much of the structures that are going to be located at that property. The memorandum of agreement was shared with the town council. Town council made a few comments, which we found acceptable, and we're here before this board to basically see if you have any other questions, and whether or not you will be able to make a recommendation to authorize the chairman of the board to hopefully sign the memorandum of agreement.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, I, you know, myself and Mr. Chambers were the members chosen by the board to negotiate this, and, and I just want to, you know, give, give sort of some, sort of some, outline our approach to it, and feel free to jump in, Steve. We approached this as, you know, with the understanding between ourselves and Sotier and his professional team, that ultimately, the zoning board of appeals was the final body that had the say. And what we were negotiating was a lip agreement that would allow the town to essentially receive some benefits in return for the select board's support, and signing on to the lip agreement to the state, and then before the ZBA. And we came in with a, we had polled yourselves to ask for some of the ideas that you had for the lip agreement, we looked at previous lip agreements that, that the board had looked at, and then we had spoken offline, neighbors had approached myself, and I know they also approached Mr. Chambers with sort of their asks. And we went through, you know, at least five meetings, and they included ourselves, Sotier and his team, the town manager, representatives from DPW, representatives from our sewer department, as well as our water department. So we, we were including sort of those, those key departments in this discussion as we were bringing things forward. We wanted to make sure that anything we proposed in here was ran by our professional staff as making sense. I know. we proposed in here was ran by our professional staff as making sense. I know both town manager, Kasanovic, as well as town manager Vecchio, were, were bringing back to the staff our, our thoughts, our ideas, where things were going to make sure everything made sense. And, you know, I think the lip agreement came a long way from where it was. And this is one of the things I will stress is that I know everyone says 40Bs are bad. I know everyone says 40B developers are bad. And I always say, no, there are good projects. There are good developers. And Sotier and his team have been great to work with, with respect to this. We threw a lot of things at them. We kept moving the goalposts on them and they kept moving right along with us because they realized that, that ultimately the final product was good for their development and was good for the community. Some of the things in here that's included is, one of the often criticism is that affordable does not, affordable housing does not always mean affordable. And we had approached Sotier to set aside a certain amount of affordable units at the lower AMI. So getting those lower threshold income level individuals who really were looking for affordable housing and creating a space, a dedicated space in there, in these, these units for them. We talked about making the units in perpetuity, not coming off at a certain time. That was, both of those were agreed upon. We talked about HP units. Those were agreed on. We want to make sure elevators, those were agreed on. We wanted to push the buildings as far back as possible from the residents on Wallace Avenue. That was agreed upon. We wanted to ensure that there was, any mature trees were kept on site as best possible to help with the screening and other green screening was added. That was agreed upon. We wanted to make sure that there was a commitment for Sotier to work with the abutter who's directly opposite the driveway and make sure that as, as best as possible to meet that abutter's needs to shield any lighting coming down from the driveway, whether it's fencing or green fencing using vegetation. So, you know, doing that. And, you know, we wanted to look at, you know, making sure they were staying out of the 100-foot buffer conservation. They committed to that. We wanted to make sure that the retention pond was covered. So no one was looking at this big hole. That's covered in the plan. They actually pointed that out. We had mentioned it. We didn't ask for it. And they came back and said, hey, we did this. You know, just showing that, that they were willing to work with us throughout this. And then probably about halfway through is when some residents asked about the, you know, brought up the fact of the water issue, that the water main along Wallace Avenue had several failures. It was aging and the residents were having issues, constant issues with their water. And we worked with Sotier and his, and his team in the water department. And then this is where we brought in DPW as well. And what we eventually got was the agreement to not just replace the line in front of the development, but to actually go all the way down to Rochdale Street. So Sotier has agreed to replace the six-inch water main with an eight-inch water main. He's still doing the road widening in certain areas. He is providing a plan to the town that, providing, providing a plan for the town so that once that is done, we can come in and make improvements to the roadway. We can pave the roadway after that work is all done. We can make improvements at that time if we want to pursue sidewalks. At that time, that's when that will be done. So there's a lot of things in here that the developer, that Sotier really, you know, that we were able to get him to agree to because, you know, and he said in the very beginning, you know, he wanted to ensure that he was providing the best project forward, not just for himself, but also for the town. And, and, you know, I think this lip agreement, it took us, you know, a considerable amount of time, I think longer than probably Sotier wanted and probably, you know, a little longer than we wanted with meetings. But, you know, I think this is a, a good overall lip agreement. That being said, I know our initial agenda called for a potential vote. I asked that to be amended. And the reason why is because I remember that we made a commitment to the Wallace residents, that we would discuss the lip agreement. We would bring it to the board, allow the board to digest it, put it out publicly and then allow at a future board meeting, a public hearing where they would be able to come in and provide us feedback on the lip agreement, not to negotiate the lip agreement, but to provide their feedback to us on whether they thought it was a good idea or not. We had made that commitment to them. So that's why, if some of the board members or the members of the public are wondering why the potential vote is not on tonight's, that's why. Because we, the intention was to have a public hearing at our next regularly scheduled meeting before the board takes any vote.
So I think I'd like to add a little bit to that. So again, you definitely surmised quite a bit of it. I think the intention from the beginning, the residents came out, voiced their concerns, and we tried to jam as many of those concerns into this and get them resolved. And to the developers, you know, good standing with the town and saying all along, he wants to work with the town and make sure this project is good. He didn't back away from anything we asked for. We had the intentions of the residents. Again, not all 40B is bad. And this, this goes to show that while it might not be ideal for everybody, I think it addresses a lot of the concerns. The fact is, if this is to go through and get approved, that roadwork won't be inconsistent or coming through twice a year and really digging it up. It solves many issues for that neighborhood, not just for the town, but while they'll have short-term pain in the development of this, I think at the end of the day, it provides stable development. The in perpetuity was huge. The fact that they're willing to offer some units at the 60% AMI is, you know, amazing because I think that is where our need is. And we always talk affordable is not really affordable. This opens it up. There's also potential for the residency requirement to whatever the state will allow. So if there are Auburn residents looking to remain in Auburn, they will have an opportunity. And again, depending on what the state allowable limit is for that residency, I think it helps those in town first, but also opens us up to the greater need of the, the region and the housing crunch that we're in. So.
One, one last thing I just wanted to add that I forgot about this. So one of the things we heard and when we looked sort of at era images, it was clear that there were unofficial community paths or hiking paths through that area that people were using. And, you know, as best possible after the final plans are approved, provided that it doesn't risk any liability to Sotier or, or make his project unbuildable, any ability for those paths that are outside the, the footprint of the, of the buildings, the town has the right to work with Sotier to secure the rights to that area for conservation purposes so that those paths that are used by the public right now to hike up to the lake or, or over to Rochdale Street will, we have the right to pursue that and preserve that pass.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, Mr. Carpenter?
Well, first, thank you to both of you for taking on, not once, but twice, kind of a Herculean task for 40B. I like the proposal. I appreciate your willingness to work with the town. That is worth its weight in gold. So you get a lot of good credit there. The only thing that I really had was 4G, which is page 4G. And it starts with adhere to the 100-foot buffer zone. But what concerned me in the language is grading drainage and landscaping within 100-foot buffer zone will be permitted. We should be in, language should be in there, subject to conservation commission approval. That's, that's under their jurisdiction.
Yeah. So that went before town council and it's automatic in state law that, that that's before the conservation that this select board, just like we can't overwrite ZBA's ultimate approval of this, we can't overwrite CONCOM's review of the 100-foot buffer and approval of anything happens within 100-foot buffer. What this main part was, the goal of this was to say that no buildings, that Sotier agreed that no buildings would be within that 100-foot buffer, because you might remember early on, there was some question on where that buffer was. And one of the buildings was etched in just a little bit. And, and so the, the plans were adjusted to take all the buildings, even in a concept level, out of the 100-foot buffer.
And that's great, but it should be reflected in the agreement. Conservation, I don't want anybody getting the idea that we're approving anything. And I'm well aware that it's in state law, but it should be in the contract that we sign. It shouldn't be, this is allowed. It should be, it's allowed per the law, which is conservation. So I just, I mean, if we don't need the language in there, then take out those two sentences and my issue is happily gone.
Through the chair, is, is that something you would, you wouldn't mind adding to it, subject to approval? If, if we add that language to it?
Which, which page are we?
It's four, section G. And it's really just to ensure the authority remains with what state law says it. So it's not changing anything, except calling it out that this board does not have the authority to grant.
So, so essentially where it says grading drainage and landscaping within the 100-foot buffer zone will be permitted, it would say grading drainage and landscaping within the 100-foot buffer zone will be permitted, subject to approval of the conservation commission? I think your attorney is looking to you for the okay.
Just so you know what I was saying, I don't want any lack of transparency. We're fine with it because the plans will adhere to that. I was just commenting, as you know, probably stating the obvious, that if there were waivers from local regulations, that's the job of the ZBA, not the conservation commission. And since I'm not as familiar with the plans, I just wanted to ask Sotier and our engineer. But they're satisfied that we'll be fine with that. So thank you.
And for the record, Bill Hannigan with Hannigan Engineering, the, the conceptual plan, we actually pushed the, the, the area of wetlands we were shown on the original plan was based upon Mass GIS. We haven't had the wetlands delineated as of yet, but we did push that way up into the, into the profile of the topo to kind of make it fit. So we have some, some, you know, additional, you know, wetland area that we're calling out in the, in the, in the, on the concept plan. The, once the delineation is done, that would really kind of set the boundaries. If we need local waivers, we would, we would do them through the ZBA, but we would also review those as part of the conservation process anyways. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I think what we're, what we're talking about then is having a meeting in two weeks, inviting the butters. So having a hearing in two weeks. And at that point, we would vote on this lip agreement after the hearing.
And I, I just want to clarify, I don't think that we need Sotier and his team here for that. It's a, it's a public hearing for this, for the public to weigh into the select board on the lip agreement and whether we should vote up or down, not on, not on adding or negotiating or, or changing anything.
Okay. So you wouldn't have to come then. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going back to our agenda, we're looking in departmental items, 8C, Auburn Fire Rescue Department, a board vote to apply for the fiscal 24 staffing for the adequate fire and emergency response, the SAFER grant. Is this right, fiscal 24? Okay.
Yes, the federal government is several, several years behind. So this is for fiscal 24 money. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So as outlined in the letter, I'm looking for the board to support us applying for the FY24 federal SAFER grant. Like with any federal grant, whether it's SAFER or AFG, the board's vote to allow us to apply is not the vote to accept. So if we were to receive the grant, we would come back to the board and then the board would have an opportunity to discuss the merits and then vote up or down as to whether or not we were going to receive the grant. As the board is well aware, you know, we've, we've made some strides over the last several years with staffing in the fire rescue department, based on the staffing study from 2022. We've grown by about eight positions since then. Each group is currently at 11 in the FY26 budget. I had made a request for four positions. That was reduced by town administration to two positions mid-year. So that is in the budget for a January start. So we are still, we are still making moves and making strides to get to 12. And then ultimately, the goal is 13 as as recommend, recommended in the staffing study. So what, in my letter, I believe, I'm just scanning it here. I don't remember if I actually asked the board on how many positions I was asking you to support. So the goal, you know, my thought would be if the ultimate goal is to try to get to 13 positions and we have an opportunity, opportunity to, you know, have the federal government contribute to that over a three-year period. If you were to take the two positions that we currently have in FY26, then that would be a request of six. But I would suggest that we roll the other two positions in to try to get those covered as well. So it wouldn't be levy, levy funds for FY26. So just to kind of break down what we're talking about in terms of dollars, and I didn't run the number on eight because originally in my mind, you know, when I wrote the letter, we were talking about six positions. But it would be a three-year grant if successful. And the federal government would pay for 75% of the positions, including benefits years one and two. And then they would pay 65% in year three. So if no grant was involved and the town was to hire six positions, we're talking about a value of about $437,000 a year for those six positions. With the grant, that would be reduced to 109 in year one, be 109 in year two, and it would be 283 in year three. So if you looked at the three-year period of the grant, without grant assistance over that three-year period, it's about one point, it's about a $1.3 million investment from the town. It would, that would be reduced by well over 50% to be $500,000 over that same year, about three-year period. So there's certainly an advantage that if the town is looking to continue to increase staffing within the fire, fire rescue department, this is a great opportunity to do so. And again, it does not commit the town to accepting those funds. We would come back if we were successful. I will remind the board, like I do every time, we apply for a federal assistance to firefighters grant or a SAFER grant. These are extremely competitive grants. They're nationwide grants. So, you know, we have received a SAFER grant in the, in the past, so it's not impossible. But they are competitive. But, you know, I know the board is always looking for departments to go out and try to seek grant funding for, for projects that we're looking at. And that's, that's what we're doing here today. So I will certainly take any questions from the ward if you have any.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just have a couple of questions. What is the current staffing per apparatus that we have right now?
So the current staffing on our apparatus today is, is two. So there are obviously two people on an ambulance. You can't operate it with less than that. But on our fire suppression pieces, it's two. The National Fire Protection Association recommends four. As I have stated publicly for years, I would be thrilled if we could get to three. And that's ultimately what has been my goal for many years is to try to get three firefighters on a piece. But currently, our two fire engines that we have staffed on a daily basis has two members.
So walk me through this. If, if the NFPA standard is four and we're, we're currently staffed at two, if a fire, let's see, breaks out at my house, knock on wood, and I have, if you're coming, one, first apparatus arrives and there's only two people on there, and you know there's people inside, how many go inside?
Two.
Two go inside.
If one apparatus, so there is a, there is a law that's on the books. It's an OSHA requirement, also backed up by the NFPA. It's, it's called the two-in, two-out.
Right.
And the two-in, two-out rule says that for every two firefighters that enter an area that's immediately dangerous to life and health, there shall be two members outside to do that. There is one exception to that, and that is a life safety, that's a life safety exemption. If we believe that there is someone in the house that is to be rescued, then we are able to violate essentially two-in, two-out. And those two members on the truck would go in. Now, it's an extremely risky and complicated thing because there's, with there only being a driver and a supervisor on the engine, we would have to, we would essentially have to put the truck and pump. We would have to set it. And then we would be going in, you know, to make that. we would have to set it, and then we would be going in, you know, to make that rescue. And there is nobody outside essentially manning the, manning the apparatus.
Right. So there's nobody outside manning the apparatus, and God forbid, conditions get worse, something happens to both firefighters as well as the people inside. Until that second apparatus shows up, there's no one that's coming in to save the, you know, to rescue the rescuers. NFPA standards are four for very specific reasons, and it is that, you know, my understanding is that it is to ensure the safety of the, the first responders as well as the, you know, as well as the residents who are, are in there. I am, and I know I shared this with you previously, I am very concerned that we are not even at three, to provide at least one person outside for the two that are going in. And I think it's great that we are getting a new fire station, long overdue, but that doesn't mitigate the very clear safety concerns that we're currently operating under due to fiscal constraints, and I understand that. That, you know, that makes all the more reason why we need to go for this grant and why we need to continue working to get to three, and then yes, to four on an apparatus. We owe it to our first responders to keep them safe while they're keeping us safe. So I just want to, you know, and I know that there are, you know, triggers in this that, you know, the first year, we have to pay 25%, the first and second year. And I think the third year, they actually, we have to pay 65%.
Correct.
Yeah. Thirty, 35 of the actual, okay. So, so it starts going down, and by year four, it's on the town completely.
That's correct.
And I know that might scare some people, but I think the alternative of not doing this and not supporting the firefighters and making sure that we are doing everything we can to keep them safe and keep ourselves, and while they're keeping us safe, is, you know, quite frankly outrageous that we haven't got there sooner. And I just, I fully support this and every other effort you can to get at least three on an apparatus, if not four. And I strongly encourage, as we go into the next budget cycle, whether we get this grant or not, that we give serious consideration to the needs of the fire department to move the needle on that issue. Worcester County and the city of Worcester knows firsthand the dangerousness of, of, you know, this, of not having adequate support for firefighters as they're going in. And really, it just really bothers me that we're not getting there faster. The Stafford report, when did that come out?
2022.
2022. The fact that, you know, three years later, we're still discussing making headway with that is really, and it's not that, and I understand that's not anyone's fault, I understand the budget constraints we have and competing demands within our budget, but, you know, this is something that I think we really need to focus on as a board, as town meeting, and as, you know, the new town manager coming in to really prioritize this public safety issue.
Through the chair, Chief, do you know what the overtime expenditures were this past year? Do you even know that off the top of your head?
So as you know, overtime the last couple of years has been, been challenging. If you go back, if you go back last fiscal year in fiscal 24, very early on in fiscal 24, in the month of July, we had a series of resignations. We had a series of people with off-duty injuries. So within about a 30-day period, within the first month of fiscal 24, I was down the equivalent of an entire working group. So it, it took us a little while, you know, to kind of get back to that. And again, it, it goes back, and I, the last thing I want to do is rehash this overtime conversation because it seems like it's all I've been talking about for two years. But that problem, coupled with six previous fiscal years of being level funded with overtime, and actually one reduction year in overtime, it put us severely behind the eight ball. Even, even if we were staffed, or not staffed, I'm sorry, if we were funded what I would have considered to be appropriately in fiscal 24, it's very difficult for any organization, any department, to overcome essentially an entire working group. That's, in my 20 years, that's happened to me twice. So it's not something that happens often. It was, it was a set of circumstances that, you know, that just collided all, all at once. And it created, you know, a situation where we were budgeted $300,000 and we spent somewhere that fiscal year of about $750,000. So it's a considerable jump when you look at it from three to 750. But as we made the compelling argument to the Finance Committee this year through an overtime study that the deputy worked very hard on, we did a 30-community comparative, what we discovered was that the average in communities of, of our size and our demographic with our call volume, and that's essentially where the overtime needs to be essentially based on, its call volume. We're trying to accomplish, you know, when you're, when you're trying to decide the overtime budget, you're looking at two things. How many calls are you doing annually? And how many people are you trying to do it with? That's really the only metric, you know, when you're, when you're trying to just figure out how many people you need in the building to do those calls. And of the, the average of those communities that fell within our demographic and our call volume, their average budgeted overtime was, was slightly over $900,000 a year. And their actual overtime expenditure was somewhere around 1.1 to 1.2 million. We were budgeted 300,000. So we were considerably underfunded in that. The Finance Committee, and then we had some struggles this year as well because, you know, and again, when you, when you lose some people to retirements or you lose people that go on to other jobs, it's not just as easy as hiring somebody, bringing them in, and they're starting fresh. So we're still, you know, we're still trying to recover from a year and a half ago, almost two years ago now, with new people coming out of the academy, training, getting their paramedic certification. It takes time to, to recover from that. So even this fiscal year was a little tough, again, because we were, we had a slight increase in overtime in this fiscal year, FY25 by $30,000, so we went from 300 to 330. But it's still, it wasn't anywhere near what we needed in order to cover the overtime. The Finance Committee, Town Administration, they worked with us this year to essentially double our overtime budget to 600,000. Now, it's still 300,000 under what the average was of those other communities. But like I said to the Finance Committee, do I think we need 900,000 in overtime? We don't. I, I don't think we need 800. I don't even really think we need seven. I think the, the six is a, is a good starting point. We're going to need an entire fiscal year, hopefully with few off-duty injuries, few on-duty injuries, hopefully no resignations. We don't have any retirement slated for this year. So hopefully at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have a good idea as to where, where that 600 will get us. But, you know, based on the deputy and I's calculation in terms of, you know, paid time off and what employees are entitled to in terms of benefited time off, we think the 600 is a good number to start. What is really hurting us lately is the amount of off-duty callback because this is a direct result of staffing. And this isn't anything new, that the board hasn't heard me say before. Outside the city of Worcester, we are the busiest fire rescue agency in southern Worcester County. In the 20 years that I've been here, our call volume has more than doubled. It's, it's increased by over 100%. Just since 3 o'clock this afternoon, they've done nine calls for service since 3 this afternoon to the time where we are here right now. We had multiple back-to-back calls, everybody was out. The problem is, is that our back-to-back call ratio is so high that that drives the need to bring off-duty firefighters in to respond to the next call to assist mutual aid. So it's sort of this perfect storm. Again, in the 20 years that I've been here, when I started in 2006, we had eight members of, to group, to a group. We've increased that group size from eight to 11, so by three members in 20 years. But again, our call volume has, has grown by over 100% in that same 20-year period. So the amount of staffing that we've added to the department over that 20-year period has not kept pace with, with what the call volume is.
So I, I believe you mentioned, and since my time on the board, I think we've added eight heads, which is, again, maybe not enough, but we're headed in that direction. Maybe I should ask the question a little bit differently, so you didn't have to go on. 400,000 for six new firefighter, paramedics, is that what you estimate, somewhere around there?
Yeah, so if we were to hire six positions, the annual salary for those firefighter EMT positions, it's, it's a $72,000 a year salary. That totals 436,000 annually.
So I was trying to get to, we've had a lot of issues, and you stated them quite eloquently there, with overtime. Would this reduce, would six positions reduce that overtime significantly? Or are we still at the whim with, you know, callbacks and, you know, we're, we're going to be short-staffed at some points? But does that, can we say, oh, you've increased the budget to 600,000, 900 is where they're telling us? Does that mean 700,000 gets us to where we need to be? And we'll be able to use that remaining, if you want to call it that?
Yeah, that's a good question. And, you know, the reality is, is it's a little bit of a moving target because in, with the number of people that we have on a shift or actually within the department and what they're eligible for, you know, two weeks vacation, a personal day, all of that. In order to allow everybody in the department to get the paid time off that they're allotted, we need to allow three people off per day. Well, with 11 a group, right, that means we would have, if we were to allow three off, we would have eight. We have proven over the last couple of years, I tried it when we were in the budget constraint that we were reluctantly, you know, I, I wasn't happy about it either. The deputy cautioned against it, the union certainly wasn't happy about it. But I felt like I had to do something to put my finger in the dam to try to stop the bleeding on overtime. So I reduced the minimum staffing from nine to eight on a daily basis. It lasted about a month, and I had to revert that decision and go back to nine because it was not working. So nine right now, in my opinion, is still not enough. But it's the magic number that allows two staffed engines with, with a total of four firefighters, two ambulances, and a shift commander in the car that picks up a lot of the overflow and is ultimately the shift commander of the shift. You need nine to do that. But we run into this situation where there are occasions that we'll run it at nine, but then the deputy will say, we're going to have to use some overtime to fill, like, to allow three off. And then we, in order just to allow the time off. So the ultimate goal of getting to 13 is to still allow three members off per, per day, if, if that was the case. And there's not always three members off, but that's, that's what you would have to allow off in order for everybody to use their time. But the goal of 13 is to have 13 a group, we could allow three people to be off, be at a minimum of 10, which is one higher than where we are now. It would, at a minimum, put us at one three-person engine, with then the second engine being staffed at two. And that in and of itself, yes, that would reduce overtime because we would have that, that buffer there. But right now, with 11 on a group, or even if we were to move to 12, in order to allow the three off, it puts us at nine. And then we're just one sick call, one off-duty injury, one on-duty injury, away from now dropping below the nine, which forces overtime to keep us back to nine. So it's a dance that we do on a daily basis. It's not a great dance, but that, those are some of the struggles. In theory, on paper, yes, if we were at 13 and we allowed three people off and everybody was going to come to work for 365 days a year, you're never going to ever eliminate overtime because the amount of emergency callback and all those things. But would it reduce it from a PTO standpoint? It would, but that's providing no other catastrophe happen throughout the year in terms of our staff.
Now, I'd be interested if there's some sort of formula, again, knowing all the different constraints. But again, additional staffing, if we're adding additional staffing at 430,000 a year, but we're able to save 200, like, the net there is, is something probably more attainable. And again, no one wants their taxes to go up, but I think everyone agrees that public safety is something we need. So again, I don't know if there's a way to say, hey, if we can reduce the overtime by 20% with these additional hires, you know, that would be expected. But again, there's a reason you didn't get 900,000 in overtime, whether you need it or not, we don't have it.
Yeah, 100%.
And that said, I know you guys have done that dance, and we've been behind the eight ball, and again, delaying it for that many years. I know, again, since I've been on the board, we've added eight heads. That's significantly up the budget as well, but I think we're safer for it, and I'd continue that trend. So I would definitely recommend that we apply for any and all grants, and we support you to get to that number. But again, knowing we still have those constraints of budget.
100%. Through the chair. I also just, I, you know, I think it's important for the public to understand that, you know, the Fire Rescue Department, outside of the Sewer Department, you know, where they have a retained earnings account, you know, outside the Sewer Department, we are the only department that collects ambulance revenue, which supports a significant portion of our budget. About 1.6, 1.7 million dollars of ambulance revenue is used as a direct offset to our budget on an annual basis that pays for a total of 13 positions within the department, including the fleet mechanic. So if you include the fleet mechanic, that's 14. So, and some of those positions that we've grown by over the last few years, as far as those eight positions, four of those eight positions are paid for through ambulance receipts. So I, I'm not disputing what you're saying, I agree 100%. But it, I think it's important for people to understand that when, when we talk about adding eight positions to the department, the taxpayers are not funding eight positions, they're, they're currently funding four. And, you know, I, I want to, there was a little bit of a 40B discussion tonight. And so I want to just remind the board of something that I have said in the past, you know, a couple of years ago, both when, when Mrs. Jacobson was here. And, you know, a long time ago, Mr. Kazanovich taught me that when you come forward with a new proposal, come forward with a funding source, you know, for it. And, you know, how do you, you know, how do you make that happen? And I've said publicly before, and I'll say it again tonight as part of this 40B discussion, is that not even all of the buildings on this Contour Lane 40B project in the west end of town are online yet. And we are overestimate on what we had anticipated we would be there for call volume. Now again, that's a moving target, I have to use, I have to use some metric, you know, that's justifiable, that I can point to, to say, how do I derive an estimated call volume number for a 320-unit housing development with X amount of people? There's a lot of factors that go into ultimately what is going to be real call volume coming out of that. But I can tell you, with really only half of the buildings open at this point, we have already overshot what I estimated for that property. We're talking tonight about potentially another 96 units. I don't need to remind this board, when we tally up the amount of 40B housing projects and what that's going to do to the potential residential population, I will just remind everybody that there is no department, because these are considered private developments. They're not impacting our DPW in terms of plowing the developments, you know, outside the sewer and water. Even on the police side, when you look at, you know, yes, there's an impact to police, but the ratio is not even close from a fire EMS perspective to a police perspective. There is no department in this town that is going to be impacted from a service delivery model, both on the emergency side and the inspection side because all of these buildings, the way that they're coded under the building code, are going to require an annual inspection from our fire prevention division. So there is no department that's going to be impacted greater than us in these 40B housing projects. And I'll just remind the board that that's the funding source that I was talking about, right? That's, as these 40B developments come online and we are bringing in new tax revenue, that is an opportunity for the board. And I understand that the list is long, and I understand that my fellow department has, we all have needs that go unmet on an annual basis. But that is an area where the board and the Finance Committee, the town admin, town management, that they can look at to look at what our new growth is coming in from these 40B complexes and try to at least direct a certain percentage in the area to the departments that are being affected the most. And so that's, I guess I'll just leave it there to say that you're right. No, nobody wants their taxes to go up. We are, nobody is more grateful than me right now that the voters supported the fire headquarters the way that they did overwhelmingly. supported the fire headquarters the way that they did overwhelmingly, that's not lost on anybody, and I understand the tax conversation. But it doesn't always necessarily mean that by adding positions to the fire rescue department, it's going to translate into an increase in taxes, because we are going to have over the next several years, new growth coming on as a result of these forty B projects, and if we can capture additional ambulance revenue, which isn't going to, it's not going to solve the world's problems, but our ambulance revenue pays for a significant portion of our, of our operation on an annual basis, so, thank you.
Madam Chair, I noticed the hour is late and we have people waiting. I think we've talked this through, I thank the chief for an excellent tutorial on no, no timeframe, I think that's one of your superpowers, so thank you for that. I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the request of the chief as outlined in or on our agenda.
Second.
Okay, I do have a question. We've applied for this grant before, correct?
We have.
Have we gotten, received it before?
So we've applied for a safer grant three times, we've received it once, we were denied once, this will be our third safer application.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good, all set, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And going back to our agenda, I think you're the next, item also.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we accede to the request of a 2013 vehicle as surplus as outlined on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I make a motion that we move up item eleven A?
Sure. A second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so eleven A.
Thank you so much. A while back, we had come, actually, I think it was a few months ago when I first became interim town manager, we had brought a grant before you regarding an energy manager. I'm pleased to say we did receive a grant, it was for a part-time energy manager. There was quite a bit of dialogue at the time on how this position, where the position would sit, funding and things like that, so I'd just like to speak to that a little bit before we talk to Brooke and Darlene. So back when we first talked about it, we were concerned about funding with Muni Ag. Currently, we have over two hundred thousand in Muni Ag, and the reason that's important to this conversation is because my proposal with this position is to actually make it a full-time position. A full-time position with part funding through this energy manager program and part funded through Muni Ag. This is the perfect way to focus on the board's and my objective of improving our economic development initiatives. It allows some time for Brooke to be able to do, a lot more time for Brooke to be able to work with the new assistant town manager when they come in and focus on economic development. So this position, we funded part by this grant, which as you can see from the backup, has a lot of deliverables per year, by year, which I'm pleased to say has quite a bit of resident interaction, which was one of the board's concerns in the past. And by making this a combined position with energy manager and Muni Ag, it just emboldens this position even more when it comes to working with residents and saving money for our taxpayers in addition to town buildings. So currently, Brooke is funded ten thousand dollars through the Muni Ag, that's going to stay in place for fiscal year twenty-six, it'll be removed in future years because she will no longer be working under Muni Ag, but I'm keeping it in place because she'll be working very closely with this new position, and it's going to require quite a bit of training, hopefully we can get someone local, but if not, it's going to be even more training, but she is dedicated to assisting this person, take on the responsibilities of the grant and also the Muni Ag portion. There are clear similarities to what she does under Muni Ag and this energy manager grant, so it just, it just makes sense to all of us. I had had conversations with Darlene from DDIS who agreed that it made sense to combine two part-time positions to a full-time position to get basically a more bang for our buck, but also a better chance of getting an employee full-time versus part-time. So currently, that is, that is what I want to open up with, and if you have any more questions, we do have Darlene and Brooke here to answer questions as well.
So if I may.
Questions, sir?
Yep, so the grant was for three years at part-time, is that correct?
We received the grant for three years at part-time, correct?
And I know we had a discussion about needing to show or outline the savings and potential and the value.
Yes.
Is that part of their plan or when the hire, like that will be, go forward, will be documenting grants that they receive, grants or funding sources, whether it's the Muni Ag or other energy reduction costs and?
Yes, good question. The, in the packet you'll see, there's a lot of deliverables, and we were a little concerned because the deliverables were for a full-time position and this is a part-time position, but the state's willing to work with us, they said, and more than reasonable to be able to do at least a majority of that in addition to Muni Ag, and it has to be very clearly documented, so the grants they go out for, the residents that they meet, any of the savings that we're able to attain, it needs to be clearly documented.
And again, if, if it's, the grant is for three years at part-time, it looks like we're trying to hire four more than three years at a full-time, I just want to make sure that whatever sources of savings is being allocated or helping that fund that position, because I think I made it clear that I wouldn't want to fund this going forward unless we could see that the value is there for that position.
Exactly, and I remember the conversation, right now, we take in about thirty-six thousand a year in Muni Ag funds that would fund this position over the next three years for that part-time, in addition to the over two hundred thousand that we have in the account now. We will monitor that very closely. If this becomes, if we're able to find the savings that we're hoping to find, then we'll have another conversation with the board and have, you know, determine if this is someone that we keep on full-time moving forward, or if we revert back to part-time, maybe that's what's best for us, so at that time, we'll be able to make that determination.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Okay, do we need a motion? Do we need a motion?
I don't think so.
So it was just a discussion.
Just discussion, all right.
Had any questions? You're welcome.
We're all set, thank you, Brooke. Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support, thank you. All right. Back at our agenda, continuing. Under Select Board General Items, we have gift acceptances, according to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Thirty-three A.
Motion, we accept with gratitude.
Second.
Okay, I just wanted to, do you have it?
I do, it's fifty-dollar grant to the department gift account from Donna L. Bacon.
Okay, that's generous of her, okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept this, any, a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, going back to our agenda. Uh-oh.
Ten E.
All right, we're looking at ten E, we're going to vote on reappointments for board and committee members with terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. All right, so first, finding, do we have to vote individually? Unless we hear a motion to take them in total?
I, yeah.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we?
We should hold the ZBA position because that's moving somebody from an associate to, to a full board member.
I, I'm prepared to vote on that tonight, I traded communication on my own with the ZBA chair, because I saw that this was moving from an associate to a full position.
Yep.
To get his input, our policy generally is that we provide him opportunities for the chair to weigh in, and I reached out to him, and he supported moving Attorney Bush to a full position, knowing that Mr. Chikolo was not seeking reappointment, he spoke very highly of her, her capabilities, the questions she asks and her deliberative deliberation in nature. I've watched those meetings, I think we've all watched those meetings and attended those meetings, I myself believe that she's, you know, she has been serving the committee for six years, very well as an associate member.
I can interrupt, Mr. Crane, my concern isn't her appointment, it's that it's different than the others, these are reappointments, if he's a new appointment, I'm not saying don't vote on it, I'm just saying.
He's not saying don't vote tonight, you're just saying.
No, no, I'm not saying don't vote tonight, I'm saying it's a totally different item than the other.
All right, so do I hear a motion that we've taken total the votes for reappointments with the board and committee members for the, and then we'll list the names individually in a moment, but for the three, the six appointments?
Make a motion to appoint to the finance committee for three-year term ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, Stephen Consilio and Michael Marshall.
But you want, their term will now be ending in twenty?
I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing.
Yep.
The term is three years, so it's twenty twenty-eight, so six-thirty, twenty twenty-eight, thank you.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the two finance committee reappointments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
I would make a motion that we appoint for one-year terms to the flag design committee, Steve Consilio, Micah Cummins, and Tristan LaLiberty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
I just ask a question, have we, have we confirmed that all three want to be appointed and have the time to dedicate towards this?
Through the chair, yes, we have.
And I should include my motion, a one-year term expiring on six-thirty, twenty twenty-six, to keep, to keep passion.
Do you have another second?
I'll continue my second, yes.
Okay, thank you, so a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right.
I would make a motion to appoint to the zoning board of appeal to a three-year term, did I?
Yep.
Well, I don't want to miss Emma Martin. I will make a motion to appoint Emma Martin, reappoint Emma Martin, to a three-year term ending in, on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, to the board of registrars of voters.
Seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? No. All right.
Make a motion that we appoint Caitlin Bush to the vacant position on the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term ending on six-thirty, twenty.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No. All right, so let's see, looking back at this list, we've moved a lot of things around tonight, all right, we have no tabled items, we have a member item, so this is thirteen A, we have a discussion on the current contract with town council, including the last time the board issued an RFP for legal services, Todd Crane.
So I just wanted to bring this to the board, the charter provides this board with the authority, I believe, to hire three individuals, the town manager, the town accountant, and the town council. And I believe, going back in, you know, as far as I could, we have not gone out for and looked for a new town council, not that we necessarily want a new town council, but we've not issued a RFP for a new town council for at least a decade. I think the last thing, I had asked town administration to look at this, I think they found that it was twenty twelve was the last time that this board went out to look at options for the town council position. My own personal opinion is that this is an important position that we should regularly go and look and assess the market for, the opportunities, I think that, especially with forty B and other issues coming before us, that we have an increase in need for town council services as it respects to not just the normal day-to-day issues or questions about open meeting law, but also providing support to our ZBA when it comes to dealing with the forty B issue, providing support to our planning board as they go through their permitting processes, the conservation commission, et cetera. We've seen a lot more demand and asks put on our town council, and I think it would make sense for us, in my own opinion, to go out and look at either issuing RFP or a request for quotes and to have our town manager put out a request that defines the needs of the town now and in the future, not over a decade ago, and to see if our current town council, as well as any others in the marketplace, providing town council services to municipalities, can respond to that and speak to their experience, their, their level of commitment, their level of availability, and of course, their legal fees. And allow us to, to look at potentially, you know, considering whether we stay with the current town council or we hire a new town council. Over a decade of not looking for a lawyer just doesn't seem right to me.
I think we should always be looking, not just for town council, but also the accountant, I know there were some informal discussions about three years ago, I don't think it ever went beyond informal discussions, but we should always be looking for the best value, and if we have a good RFP, we can certainly delineate that value for any of the contracts that we enter into, so I think we should be looking at anything and as it comes up, as it expires, as I would like the town manager to be looking at those contracts when they expire under her authority, and everyone should be looking at it, whether they go much beyond that, but we should be getting or trying to extract the best value and enhancing our contracts for the current needs, obviously, if you haven't, if you're just signing up amendments to the contract, you're not providing that best value as the needs change, especially over decades.
Through the chair, while I appreciate best value, I have to say there's something about historical knowledge about the town and how it has moved to the present, and I think, you know, while I'm not opposed to looking at contracts or potentially an RFP, I think it's not always just the cheapest that is the best.
And I didn't mean to imply cheap, and again, we certainly can value that historical aspect, and again, we have turnover, but we can certainly incorporate what they provide and decide on what that value is.
And, you know, I want to make very clear that I'm not talking about going for the cheapest, the reason why I want to do an RFP and not a straight bid is because with an RFP, you can look at their experience, you can look at their historical knowledge, you can look at the type of cases they handle and make a decision separate of their fee, you can factor the fee in afterwards, but I'm looking for, you know, with legal counsel, you get what you pay for, the cheapest lawyer is not the best lawyer, I'm not looking for the cheapest lawyer, I'm looking for, to make sure that, and it could be our current town council, it could be a different town council, that we have the best lawyer on our side, defending the town, giving advice to our boards, and again, we haven't done this in well over a decade, and I just, it's just a best practice to make sure, and absolutely historical knowledge plays into that, but that's one of the factors, not the only factor.
Any questions, Mr. Carpenter?
I don't really have any questions, I think it's a wonderful, you know, idea to kick around, we don't have on here anything for a vote, so we can all go home and rest our brain and come back and maybe we'll give, give the requests to town administration to make a change. You know, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know what the law, you know, how valuable it is to know that in nineteen ninety-three, we settled a case, and twenty-ten, we settled a case, and these were the reasons, because with the exception of very few people, nobody on the boards currently have any relevance to those, to those dates and times, so, you know, I certainly am not weighed down by history despite what people will say of me. I think we do need to look at this, I think the auditing contract also needs to be looked at, that's been, you know, long before I was elected as a member of the Board of Selectmen, he probably has two more years on his contract, but we need to start thinking about getting fresh eyes, we're in a totally different century, I know I'm not necessarily the best person to sit here and move us forward, but I think we have to start making changes and how we do things. but I think we have to start moving changes in how we do things. We have to stop talking about the budget as a bottom-line number and what it, what the actual dollars represent. The value and investment that the budget, you know, represents is really my measure of a good budget, a bad budget, an ah budget, or, you know, I could care less budget. So I think we need to start thinking about investing in ourselves and really thinking about the future. Because we are so far behind. I fear that I'm going to be dead by the time we catch up. And I know I'm not going to be here sitting at this board table when that happens, unless I spontaneously get taken tonight. So I would support further discussion at another, at another time when it's not 8:30 in the evening. And people have talked at me for probably three hours and my ears and my brain aren't processing. So thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Crane, and.
Okay.
And I just make one last final comment. I think some of us have the intention of weekend and burnies. You, Mr. Carpenter, we're, we're going to prop you up here because your presence is needed.
Well, I'll make sure that the gravedigger gets me to the undertaker so I can be burned so that they can scatter me before you can get to me. That sounds like hell on earth.
Okay, so we have two more items. Now, we have public comments. I believe Mr. Eric Richards, you're signed up for it, plus you had wanted to postpone your comments till the end anyway. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to postpone. My name is Eric Richards. I live on Ravine Drive in Auburn, Massachusetts. Came to comment about the engineering update. So interest of full disclosure, I'm the one. I'm the one who called the state about the leak. I'm the one who suggested that you get in touch with the state. You talk to each other and see about fixing the culvert. Well, you're doing the 290, 395 interchange at a 30% savings. Any hate? Right here. Not shy about it, bring it. However, none of this was nefarious. I brought it forward. I had no intention of doing a 60-page white paper. It just was in the interest of thoroughness and my hopes that you as a board, who have expressed an interest in strategic leadership and direction and recapturing your, your duties, that you would bring attention and a much-needed decision-making to an issue. This issue just happens to be one of four dams. By the way, there are three others that I guarantee you have deteriorated precipitously that we haven't even talked about. And I'm not going to because it's obvious. So we sit here, we have a decision. Or, well, correction, you have a decision. You could rip it out, get a grant from the state to do that, get it partially or fully funded, have a swamp full of mosquitoes next to a $600,000 building and be just fine and never sink another penny into it. You'll abate the mold and the water problem and the issues with your newly refurbished building and smile along the way. Or you can have a water feature with a dam, potentially bring some revenue, potentially have a swim area, a green area. And it brings all sorts of capital opportunities for you to explore. But it doesn't make sense to continue to sink money into something if you don't have a direction for it. And the building that costs $600,000 is as connected to the dam as your head is to your body. The culverts, like your legs, they're all one piece. It has to be a holistic view, and I don't think anybody was taking that view before. I had hoped to get you to think about that a little bit. As far as the engineering, I brought a concern about the wall leaking because I don't need an engineering stamp to understand water shouldn't come from walls of a dam. If you doubt me, go home, drill a hole in your toilet tank. No, drill three. We'll be close to what we have leaking out of that dam and see how long it takes you to appreciate that there's a problem with water coming from a place it shouldn't. What I didn't see in this update tonight from the engineer who's not here is any of them putting their signature on a line stating with, this is my responsibility. I'm certifying that this dam is safe. I've measured the water outflow from that wall and determined it is X. Engineers, what they like to do is calculate. There were no calculations here. Nobody put a stamp on the line. Nobody put their profession on the line. It was all platitudes and trust me, bro. I don't know why that flies. Doesn't fly in my business. You're all smart, urbane, sophisticated people. Why does it fly here? Not only that, there are instruments embedded into that dam placed in 2010 called pzeometers. They haven't worked since 2018. They're documented in the Phase One engineering studies from that date and before. There's a CMR, 302 is the section, subsection 10, and there's a list of violations in there. Don't care, but it's an unfunded liability. It's a $500 per day fine. Every day, those pzeometers don't work in a high-risk, high-hazard dam, fair condition or not. Do the math, it's a million dollars in potential liability. I don't care. I'm not going to run to the state and say, you need to charge the town of Auburn a million bucks. It's coming out of my pocket. It's coming out of your bank account. It's in nobody's interest. But there is a safety issue. There are people who will be impacted. There are businesses, million-dollar businesses on Southwood Street who will be impacted if that dam fails. Those people probably don't have flood insurance. By the way, the town is capitally insured. The taxpayers are on the hook. Again, it's an issue. It's something that I thought was worthy of consideration. I hadn't heard here. And I don't think it's right that those people are adversely impacted when they may or may not know just because they're busy. And it's not right that your predecessors, just like 40B, have turned the cheek, have made whatever decisions they've made and moved along. We have, we pay for engineering studies. Those Phase One studies I talked about, they're great. They give you recommendations every time. Do you know what they show? We spent $525,000 in 2010 to refurbish the dam. So add that to the $600,000 building you have. You have 1.2 invested so far. Each of those studies, starting in 2011, again in 2013, increased recommended maintenance options. Your predecessors, the leadership here, ignored them. Now, the most recent study in 2023 has $158,000 worth of maintenance items having been touched. Who knows what that is in $2025? By the way, those maintenance items contribute to the stability and safety of that dam. Where are we at today? I don't know that answer. Hopefully, we'll find out in a couple of months. But will you sink another $500,000 to bring the dam up to standard? Because by the way, the spillway can't handle capacity. It's at 205 cubic feet by measurements. It's 50% of where it should be. It's going to need to be redesigned. And by the way, the 2023 engineering study has a list of recommendations. Engineers are great people. They're like doctors and lawyers and any other professional. They don't want to be left standing when the music stops. But they do write. They may not specifically piss their client off by saying, by the way, you need a Phase Two hydraulic engineering study. But they will, in the subtext, much like a paramedic or fireman or cop or doctor, will say, Charlie probably shouldn't eat Big Macs every day on the couch and ate Doritos and that's what gave him a heart attack, in jargon or fine print. All of the engineering recommends, recommendations from the Phase One 2023 study recommend a Phase Two study. There are all elements of those things. The Phase Two study grant funding exists. It's funded through the state. It could be paid for here. At least 75%, potentially 100% until 2027. I brought that to the town manager chair, made her aware. I think you should consider voting, applying, going through that process to get it done, even if you don't think you need it. Why? Well, number one, it's been recommended for six Phase One engineering studies that nobody looked at. Two, if you intend to use it for recreation, they're going to force you to do a Phase Two study. Will it be in 2030 when there's no funding and you have to pay out of pocket for it? And it's that much more expensive? Or will it be today where you have a possibility of getting it free? These are just a few of the things that I wanted to comment and bring forward. I notice nobody's mentioned it. Let's take a look at the Emergency Action Plan 2024. Recycled, carbon copied, paste essentially since 2008 with the floodplain results and the inundation maps unchanged, unupdated, nothing done. The people to contact in place of emergency haven't been here for eight years. Their numbers are no good. I don't see anybody talking about that here. Every five years, according to that Emergency Action Plan, there's supposed to be an emergency drill for that dam failure. Hasn't occurred since 2017. It's 2025, by the way. Now, I don't live near the dam. I'd like my kids to go swim there. I'd much rather complain about paying you, and I will complain, than paying Oxford or Worcester or West Boylston and trucking an extra 30 minutes in 100-degree heat to swim. But that's me, I'm nobody. I'm sure I'm not alone, but it is how it is. I hope that my comments have illuminated just a few of the issues. I know you don't want to listen to people talk.